Are you ready to roll?
Yep.
This is the Planning Commission meeting, February 1st. We are in room 123 for Phil Town Hall. And see who we have here today. Myself, Scott Dale, Michael Ball is here, the Vice Chair, Courtney Knapp is here, who is the Secretary. Linda Taylor is here as well, remember? John Mara is not here, I don't know if he was here at the rally we were there on. Mark Loengard, I believe it was, is the alternate, I believe he will be voting. At least until John shows. And then Aga Stenning after that, she was also an alternate. Okay, so we have the form. Item number two is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Jane, report. I did note one thing, and Linda, you can correct me, but I believe under new business number four, we had that discussion on the Steve Grant pickleball. And I believe the vote, I believe that you voted no on that, if I recall correctly. When we voted to. Yeah, we voted to postpone until we got more information. And if I remember correctly, it was one to four. One to four. Yeah, somehow I remember that, I don't know why.
So the second motion that's listed there on the minutes?
Yes, on the bottom, I believe that was one to four, if I remember.
So was it a nay or a, what was her vote, I'm sorry to miss the.
So we voted on. It was split up, right, there were two different motions on that.
Right.
We did, made a motion that we tabled the referral regarding the Steve Grant pickleball piece of it until we receive additional information.
Okay.
And I believe that was the one where Linda voted no, we voted, the others voted.
So she opposed the table?
Correct.
Okay, got it, I just want to get it correct.
Maybe she did, maybe she didn't.
Tomato, tomato. Still carried.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Those matters.
Anyway, is there anything else anybody wanted to bring up regarding those minutes? Anybody want to make any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve your minutes of the last meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
As amended.
As amended, yes, sorry. All eyes?
Aye.
Yeah.
Mark, you're up.
Oh, abstaining, I wasn't here.
You were not there, ah, who were you?
I was there.
You were there, right? Eyes, okay, any names? Thank you. Old business, you do not have any old business, I believe. And now we're into our new business, and this would be 58 Vale Road. Hello, how are you?
Hi. Just for the record, Steve Sullivan from C.C. Engineers. This is a lot line revision between 56 and 58 Vale Road. 58 Vale Road is Greenfield Global, which is also known as FONCA. 56 is a sort of vacant piece, there's some earth material storage on that property, but there's no building or anything like that. So Greenfield Global is looking to purchase 56 Vale Road and do a lot line revision to increase their property from 4.2 acres to 8.5 to, by five acres. Which would make 56 Vale Road get smaller, and it would go from 10.06 acres to 5.71 acres. They're all in the I-1 zone. This area, Brookfield, is serviced by the Municipal Sewer and Quarian Water Company. There's no septic or wells. The yellow line, just so you know, that was the, that's the existing property line. And so again, it's just a lot line revision, still two conforming lots. Always really, you know, FONCA will like to expand their existing facility, that's why they're doing it.
Any questions from anybody here on this?
Is there going to be any other driveway entrances on that, on the other side?
Nope, these, they'll usually.
They come in from the one side.
The existing driveway, correct, yeah.
And what's their, what are they planning, how they plan to use that additional space?
For warehouse, storage, warehouse, yeah, expand onto their existing building. But it has to go through lettings and zoning, this is the first step. So we did include post drafts that the town attorney could review, I think that's normally what he, they would do.
Question on the. B-E-W-J-E, this list of, I just noticed some prior situations.
Yeah, B-E, yeah, I think they own this 56, right, they're the ones that are selling it. The, the, the new 56 is going to be sold to Vale Properties, that's why the B-E's in there.
And for the foreseeable future, this piece which will remain, like will be part of the new line, that'll stay undeveloped for now?
For now, until that, the new architect decides what they want to do.
Any questions from anybody?
It's pretty straightforward, thank you.
It's pretty straightforward, okay.
Do you know if the company has produced any like estimates on jobs that might be created by this new development?
I don't have.
Okay, that's my thought, sure.
I mean, if it, I've been told storage and warehouses probably not going to be.
Not many, right.
I have one question, how would this affect the drainage easement that's?
So that, where are you about?
Around this area.
This is going to be extinguished, because they can, they own it now.
Oh, I see, I see.
Any plan to expand use of the rail line there?
No.
That gas line doesn't go next to train tracks here, does it?
Uh, no, just do you have the overhead power?
That's the other train track on the other side.
Oh, yes, yeah.
The gas line is always next to the train tracks, that's right. No, no more questions? Anybody want to make a motion on this? Or any other action?
Make a motion to approve.
You have the agenda with the application number on it?
Okay. Sorry. Okay, okay, got it, thank you. So make a motion to approve the application for lot line revision for application PL 241 at 58 Vale Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, alright, eyes? Any names?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Next slide. Thank you, Steve. He is the plan of conservation and development. What I thought we'd do is kind of address this in three ways. One, I'm just going to state some things red, and just to kind of state what we need, you know, why we're doing this, okay? Second, I was hoping Linda, you might share a little more, since you're the one who participated this in the past. I know you touched on this already, just some of the experiences that you had back when you last did this 10 years ago, or whatever that was. And then finally, Courtney has some perspectives from her background too, that might help us as well. Just to kind of lay the land where we are, alright? Of course, we can all comment as we feel we need to. Why are we doing this, so I. Things in section 8-23 says, once every 10 years, the commission, who is us? The Planning Commission shall prepare or amend, or amend, and shall adopt a plan of plan of conservation and development for the municipality. Alright, and if we don't do this, right, then we could be ineligible for discretionary state funding unless such a provision is expressly waived by the secretary. In other words, we have to do this, it's not just an option. And then in the preparation of this, then we can appoint, you know, special committees and things like that, and to get this done. And then as far as in preparing it, you know, we can consider different things, you know, a community development action plan for housing, drinking water, development patterns. I'm just highlighting some things here as we go through this. State plan of conservation development, regional plan of conservation development, physical, social, and economic, and governmental conditions, all this stuff here, alright? So, and then it's a big statement of policies and goals and things like that. And we can talk about transportation, economy, development. I'm breezing through this, obviously, there's a lot more. So, and then we can, you know, recommend the things regarding land use and such like that. So, and of course, housing is a big piece of it as well. So, I'm kind of breezing through this, obviously, there's a lot more involved, right? We know it's a big document, we got.
It's a big document, but what we did is pretty much is take the original documents that was already there and just embellish it, or take parts that we didn't take with it, but that's pretty much all we did. It's not like we had to draft something totally different, it's just smooch.
What is the next one due?
So it is in March of 2026 is when this has to be done. But if you work, look at the calendar of what's taking place, obviously, there's a lot of approvals and such that have to happen. I think, as I'm looking at it for us, I think this is our grand finale as a commission, you know?
Well, when is, when is the putting together planned, is it from 25?
I think it's at the, I think it's November of 2025, or somewhere around that time, yeah. Yeah, so, and then it's due a couple months later, so ideally, I think we would like to get this done before then. And yeah, like I said, it could be our grand finale, right?
Yeah, it looks like it.
As a commission. So that's just a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up, just to kind of lay the table down a little bit. Of course, anything that does happen with this is something that the planning, the planning commission has to review, you know? So we always, it has to go through us, not with all the input and everything and all that, it has to go through us. So yeah, we touched on the timeline, so yeah, it's February 26, but really, I think we want to get this done a little before then.
Scott, when you say due, you mean like due to the state office of policy and management, like the final?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, so, yeah. So that is kind of why we're doing this, I guess, okay, so we understand that. Linda, maybe you can touch on what you may remember from 10, 10 years ago, and how that took place. Did you follow a similar timeline? How did that work?
It's like, we did a little bit at every meeting. You know, Tom Jean would probably remember as much as myself, but I'm sure it probably recorded all. Like some parts didn't get touched at all.
Yeah.
And, you know, obviously, the building parts, things certainly changed in the last 10 years.
And who was involved in the? Do you remember?
All of us.
Oh, the whole plan?
Yeah, the whole plan, yeah, we did it as a team.
And you brought in, you got some other input, right, from?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, from different commissions. We, we sent out notices, letters to like each, with each facet of where we needed information from, and most people didn't respond to us, so.
Right.
We didn't get any answers at all, remember that, Jean? It's like, what? Yeah, so, you know, we sent library, what do you think about this milk meeting here, from them? You know, all the different commissions and stuff.
We collaborated with like the Economic Development Commissions.
Yeah, they were, Greg Dembowski was very helpful.
I think it was Harold Kerfis at the time.
Yeah, he actually had been part of this commission at one point, so he was a good bridge.
Yeah, I remember.
Were you involved in that?
No.
Linda, do you recall what, or what was happening like between July and March, and it needed to be amended? Was it, I'm just curious about, I mean, was, was it like substantive? Or was it just more like little revisions to get it ready for?
Probably to go.
Yeah, okay, that's.
It's the 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development that was, well, put in place in, I assume, 2016. That's why I didn't notice it 10 years, right?
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. And what were, what would you say were the biggest areas of discussion?
Probably housing.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and, you know, affordable housing, and. Coming up that we had to be a certain percentage, was it 10% of our things had to be affordable? That was the biggest, really.
And it also, do you have transition districts? Like at the time, there was these thoughts of these different districts within that were, was it called transitional? Like it was kind of a hybrid of residential and commercial?
Like village districts?
Well, yeah, because that's what it wound up being, but.
Yeah.
Or TCD, the Town Center District?
Yeah, that was part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of that work was done beforehand, though, right? From what I understand.
It was kind of at the same time, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay, alright. Is there anything else from your experience that we should learn from?
No, it just, I don't know, John kind of kept pushing it off. Remember Jean, oh, we'll work on it next time, or whatever.
And I also seem to remember, and again, I'm not sure, I, we've probably gone through two or three of these since I've been here, but. Didn't he assign different people, different chapters to look at, remember that?
Right.
Yeah, he assigned, he parsed out different things. And again, our, our land use secretary at the time, she just dove into this. This must have just been her passion, she must have spent a lot of her own personal time doing this amidst the million things that go on in there. And so she was involved, so I think she saved the, the commission and the town quite a bit of money, because prior to that, we had a company called Planometrics that had done this probably in 2005, 10, I remember. I don't know if it's quite that far ago. I'm not thinking that far, maybe it was supposed to be done every five years, and then they bumped it to 10, I don't, I don't remember. But this was, it was a professional company at the time, it was kind of groundbreaking, because there weren't a lot of companies out there doing it. And so he came in, and what the commission was afraid of is that he was just going to plug Brookfield's stuff into a boilerplate, you know, like a template of like, okay, that would be a generic thing that would work for every town. He didn't, he didn't, I don't think. But what the second round did with Catherine Daniel, who was in the office there, is she would hold what she calls charrettes, like small groups in the town, and they had little prototypes built, and it was, it was well thought out, but not a lot of feedback. As Linda said.
We just didn't get any feedback, that was what they wanted.
From the residents or other commissions, so.
Not even for some of the, I guess, areas that, like the Town Center or some others that might have been, no, didn't really provoke a lot of discussion?
Really, no.
No, a lot of complaints afterwards when things are done.
Oh, yeah.
Right, oh, yeah, I know about this, yeah.
No one told me, what the hell?
The plan mentions that there was some online engagement this last round. Do you recall anything, what y'all were doing there, whether there was a website or?
Survey Monkey.
Oh, Survey Monkey, okay, yeah.
Yep, definitely.
I don't know what the responses looked like or what she did with the data, but yeah, that was a big name that kept bandied about.
I still remember the original drafts and drawings, because I have them, of the Town Center District. There's no more than two-story townhouses, there was supposed to be a movie theater, restaurants, and stuff like that. And that all went by the wayside, all gone, I guess, there's some drawings still. I still have the, you know, the printout from it, so, oh, that looks nice, you know, townhouses that look like, you know, and. That was gone quickly, that idea.
So. So now, Courtney, you have some experience in all this, so maybe you can share with us some of your thoughts. And I think you've had some, you've been able to see what some other towns maybe do, or some other areas, or what your background, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so I've been involved with planning at like a variety of different scales, from like the neighborhood, you know, up to the municipality. And so, I mean, basically what I did, we had a chat, and I had taken a look at the 2015 plan, and just tried to like wrap my head around kind of what a work plan might look like for us to update this thing, depending on who wants to be involved, and so on and so forth. And then tried to translate that a little bit into a timeline that is very like sketchy, I would say draft form. It's mostly meant to be a conversation starter, especially since now that we're talking, I realized, I was looking at the July date and working backwards from that. And whereas it seems like we actually have like another six months that we can work with if we're going by the March 2016. So that's just to say that we could stretch some of this stuff out, and that would actually be good. But maybe I'll just pass this out, and we can take, and I can walk you through it, maybe take one more, or the, okay. And I apologize for the small pot, I put it on my page, it got really small. But I can walk you through, and again, this is just meant to start a discussion. And it might be based on what you were saying, Linda, your, your experience with the last time around, where you kind of took the existing plan and just updated, you tweaked it. This might be overkill, but it's something to like talk about, you know? My background in planning, mostly as a housing economic development planner, but I do a lot of community engagement, community outreach, and think about developing those kinds of processes. So that's kind of my vantage point that I was coming through, like if we were to use this as an opportunity to really try to engage the community in like a, in a deep and meaningful way, and, you know, organize, be creative about what we're organizing, but also think about, you know, people aren't showing up right away, how do we, how do we get to them? You know, and so there's a little bit of like extra thinking there, okay, so that's my long preface. And I also consulted, I'll just say the statute that you were referring to, Scott, that talks about some of the like time requirements for things, so that's kind of what I was working with here. So what I was imagining, if, and this might need to be revised a little bit, but that we could have a couple of months to establish a special committee, I think you referred to that, which might be, you know, us in addition to other, sounds like it can be open to other commission?
Well, yeah, I think we would want it to be a subcommittee of the planning commission.
Yeah, a sub, yeah, okay, subcommittee, right, okay, so, not special committee, but subcommittee. Set that up, establish a framework for ourselves on how we're going to update this thing, and then dive into updating the existing conditions. A lot of the plan is, you know, based on public data that's pretty regularly available, and that's the kind of stuff, the numbers that I'm used to crunching all the time. So we could work together, I think, in-house to do that all pretty easily, and that could be done, I think, over a couple of months. That's being generous, probably, like wouldn't necessarily take that long. And then in my brain, once we have the data that we, where we can talk about, this is how the community, you said the community's changed a lot in the last 10 years, right? So once we can like show a picture of how it's actually changing, you know, in a kind of specific and nuanced way, then it's often, in my experience, like a good opportunity to, as a way to kick things off, the public piece of it, to do some kind of open house where you're like, if you have stations or booths, and it's organized around the issues, and people can come and interact with the data. It's not like a super formal plant, you know, public hearing, but it's more informal, interactive, to get people engaged, and you can get some of, I think, their feedback a bit there, but it's like information sharing, you know? And then from there, think about using the good weather months of like the summer and the early fall. If we were to want to try to do, try to, you know, go a little bit harder with the community outreach. And this was, I was kind of modeling this on what I was reading in the 2015 plan, but adding a little bit to it. But there, we would like do some charrettes, or like at least a visioning exercise. So want to update the vision statement, or at least make sure that what is there jives with what people, you know, are still feeling. And then, you know, we might hold a couple of workshops, it sounds like there were focus groups happening previously with different stakeholders. So that we probably want to do that, you know, as well, and that can be, you know, more private, I guess. And then, this was a question, maybe for discussion, but Scott, we talked a little bit about this, like, some of these issues might be more, will be more controversial than others. And so, you know, we don't want like a one-size-fits-all kind of like format to engage in people. So are there, what will be the appropriate format for us to have those more controversial conversations? And, you know, I was thinking, maybe we could use this venue and our ability to like organize hearings to, I mean, that's just one idea, but around to, to be able to get people on record in a way where they're not able to like fight with each other. If it, you know, if it devolves in that, I'm sure it wouldn't necessarily. And then from there, like that's kind of the community engagement piece of it, and that can be as small or as big as we have the resources, capacity, like the interest to make it, I think. And then from there, it's kind of like shifting into how do we take that and the existing documents? We don't want to lose what's there already, but use it to like resynthesize and make it the new version of itself. And I think that would probably, could take a couple of months to like draft all that stuff. But if we have more time than I was thinking here, we could also give ourselves more time with that, you know? And then basically, what I tried to do is just plug in some of those dates that I think you were probably also referring to. But we need to submit, yeah, to West, to the Council of Governments, selectmen, then we need to post it at least a month or 35 days, but we might give it longer if we wanted to for public comment, and so on and so forth, like leading up to this meeting. So that's kind of where I was landing based on our conversation, but really just meant to, you know, have a conversation now, this is obviously set in stone.
Well, I agree with the more impressive timeline anyway, because of what we were talking about before. This, this is the grand finale of planning, planning will be merging.
Right.
You know, sometime around November of 2025, so.
Right, that's right, okay, that's good to remember. Can I ask a question on that note? I mean, I don't know if folks will have an answer to this, but with that merge, that merging of the two commissions, I mean, this, updating this plan might end up being that we need to, we need to, we're pointing toward like looking at the zoning code and making some updates to that. So I guess that merging of the two commissions, is there an opportunity? How do we think of that as like an opportunity to update this and also be aligned, joining?
Well, obviously, yeah, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll be involving the zoning for their input on certain areas that pertain to them, and then. Yeah, and then, yeah, we'll be working.
So I guess you're working with them more closely?
Very closely after that.
Okay.
Plus with Greg, Greg Dembowski is going to be working with us, he's.
The administrator?
Well, the Economic Development.
Right, right, okay.
Very helpful.
He's been involved in all things since it started.
Right.
Well, you're right, Catherine really did a lot that we didn't have to do for that reason, I know.
When she slept.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like a little bit of a mind dump, but.
A snapshot.
But just trying to like lay it out for us, you know, these are the steps. And then from there, we can maybe start to figure out who wants to be involved in, in what, and to what level, yeah.
And so, yeah, so that's where I was going to go with this, I, my thought is that we should. And so, yeah, so that's where, um, I was gonna go with this, I, I, uh, my thought is that we should establish a s- a planning subcommittee. Uh, Courtney can lead that, she's, uh, uh, and then this might, now, planning, of course, used to meet twice a month, right?
That makes a difference.
So, the, to, in my mind, the logical choice, if we're gonna have another meeting, that would be that third Thursday. Um, now, at least for the short term until the summer, until, uh, I think, believe we have to reconsider, uh, schedules and such like that at that point. So, that's my thought, all right? We used to meet first and third. Hopefully, that, that clears up Thursdays for you guys to a certain degree, anyway. So, uh, but I think, um, uh, you know, uh, we should meet on this, uh, at least, at least at that time. We may, as we go along, we may require something more, but, um, you know, I don't know who's interested in being part of this. Um, I think, um, you know, I think we should understand it's, it's a little bit of a commitment, it's on top of what we're doing, you know, the first Thursday of every month, okay? Um, uh, and, you know, it, of course, it will also most likely be part, a recurring part of our agenda every month as well, so, so i- i- so if you're not part of this, you're still in the loop, and, you know, ultimately, everything has to be passed by us, so, um.
Yeah.
Is everybody, what, what are your thoughts on that? Does everybody agree with that approach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds good, unless, uh, I don't know, even after one of these meetings, if you wanna set aside a half an hour after one of the planning meetings.
Oh, sure.
Just like, uh, you know, like an introduction to something like that, because we'd be all here anyway.
Mm-hmm. Right, right, right. But I, I wanna be able to, so.
So you get into the really weeds of it.
Yeah. The, the thought, and this, this is just for my background too, if you want, if you're doing a project, right, set it, set a, a timeline, a regular schedule, just so you can work on it, right? And that's the idea there, okay? And, uh, and, of course, yes, and involves our land use folks too, so.
Are you going to keep it at the same time as seven thirty for your special meetings for this, or your subcommittee meetings?
Uh, or, or earlier, same, or.
Uh, me personally, um, this time works, but a little bit earlier, like after five thirty could work, that's when my apartment gets home.
That's a, that's a little hard for me.
Yeah, um, I mean, or, or during the, or, yeah.
Uh, maybe. Would seven be better? Seven, about seven, yeah?
That would work, yeah.
So, uh, is any, who else has interest in this on a regular s- basis, being part of these meetings?
I would be interested, definitely.
Linda, would you like, is that, you're interested?
Yeah, no, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be here, yeah, I'd be.
I think we should all be interested, actually.
Everybody's, okay, hey, all right.
Sorry, I'm gonna do this.
I can't speak for John, we'll, we'll have to, yeah. So, as far as the location, I guess we could, that, that was, no question, uh, I don't know if this is open, it used to be. Um, I think a lot of what we're doing may be more of a roundtable kind of thing, I'm not sure we can, but it, but it also gives us the ability,
Just the town people.
if we wanna have some participation, we can do that as well.
So zoning needs the.
That's why I said that.
Second and fourth, right.
I was like, the second and fourth. There is, I think we are fine for this room, but let me double check, um.
Sure.
Absolutely, if you're also interested for things that you didn't necessarily wanna open up to the public, or for have this kind of format, more of a roundtable format.
Mm.
I know there's the room upstairs, the, the first selectman's meeting room, which has been utilized at times.
Okay.
Also, if it's a smaller subcommittee, we do have the land use conference room area.
Okay.
Um, I just wouldn't suggest doing that for a large meeting, because we will, we will get very close.
Yeah. Right, okay. So, I think we can follow up on that piece.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, good. All right, well, we've taken a step forward.
Can I ask a question if it's okay? Um, Courtney, maybe you mentioned, is it easy to get planet conservation and developments of other towns? Is that easy to just like find online?
Uh, yeah, I think they're all posted on the, their town websites, yeah.
I looked up a few myself, yeah.
Yeah, I would just be curious, thinking like, what does it look like for a town that has a combined planning and zoning commission? Does it really look any different than ours? Are there things, if you laid them side by side, that you'd be like, oh, we didn't consider that particular piece of it, because.
I think the requirements are the same, you know, what is expected would be the same, so.
It really, is it all pretty much the same?
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
So there's not a big difference, okay?
Yeah, I, I think it's more who's doing it, you know?
Right.
Hmm.
You know?
All right.
Um.
But I, but to that point, I mean, I think part of maybe what the subcommittee can do is like a little, a little bit more benchmarking to see, um, what are some other communities that have been doing this recently, because I, Scott mentioned, like, there are a couple of towns that have sections,
I looked at a couple, yeah.
say on sustainability, that like our current plan doesn't happen, it's, you know, might be something that we want to build out,
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. Mm-hmm.
um, and to try to see what's kind of like the state of the art of how people, how towns are, you know.
Right.
Yeah, some are like these very elaborate looking things that look like, almost like a high school yearbook.
Or visual, or graphic, yeah, yeah.
It's made from a, from a visual.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Quick, quick question, I'm sorry, so if we're saying that we're gonna start having these meetings, are we saying that we'll meet on the fifteenth of February as a first?
If, if you're open to it, you know, we can start, or.
Yes.
There is a, oh, shorten those, maybe, but, uh, at least go on forward, yeah, I think that'll be the plan.
Okay, yeah.
Any other thoughts, discussion, other ones on this? Uh, any comments from our land use folks?
Yes, one thing I'm, I'm curious about too, and as I, I spoke to you before Mr. Chair about, just to let the rest of the guys know, we have, of course, budget going on right now, and I did submit a request for a certain amount of funds, which is, I want to say a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, for aiding in this, and, and I'm also curious on how, and you brought it up, Courtney, actually, how graphic-minded this commission is with it. Because to do the words and to do the data, that's, that's fine, but is, what additional or consulting help do we need? Do we need help like for mapping purposes, updating something of that nature? Do we, are we looking for possibly a photographer? If you wanna do this all in-house, these are just thoughts that I'm throwing out there that, that tend to kind of like slip away from people. I do have a little bit, um, prac- you know, practical experience, we were just updating the P O C D when I left, uh, my, my previous employment. So I can tell you and walk you through what, what they did, it's a different area, not, they did go through the consultant. I've also dealt with commissions that wanted to do in-house, I think Bridgewater was the last one, he really did it. A hundred percent, nope, yep, entirely in-house. Uh, if you want samples of the P O C Ds, I have them all saved for surrounding towns, who they consulted with, because I served it here so long.
Yeah, next day, that'd be helpful.
And I'd be happy to share that with you or emails, so if you let me know what I can do to make your job easier.
Yeah, or, or is it something that, there's links to, or is it something that you?
I can give you links, I can give you, um, because when I started trying to figure out can kind of ballpark even what to ask for, it was very short notice on,
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
hi, you have anything over five thousand dollars, you need to get to me in fourteen days. It's like, oh, okay, um, I'm putting in for it, because I knew it was coming due, um, and I figured ask big.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Can I ask you a question? Do you know with, um, if, with Bridgewater, um, since they did it in-house, did they use their, their budget?
Ask big.
Did they have a budget, and did they use it for community engagement or anything else? Do you know?
Uh, it, they didn't, had a very small budget for it, since they did in-house, they didn't really spend a lot of money, if, I believe that document is nineteen pages, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Nineteen thirty-six pages, if I remember correctly. It is a very small document.
Yeah.
It is a small town.
Yeah.
That's small.
Yeah, so good, she's not allowed to like. Less than two thousand people, but.
Yeah. And nothing's really changed there.
Yeah, I think they have like four acre zoning requirements in certain areas.
Mathel is just the one that's talking on the card.
Okay.
So, interesting. But I'd be happy to send you, yeah, any kind of links for, for neighboring towns, their P O C Ds, so you're not searching for them.
And maybe that's not a bad place to start, before we meet, uh, two weeks from today.
But I thought, I, I, I was, I kind of thought that Greg Dombrowski already had a plan, and kind of like, uh, was in the works or something? Have you worked with him at all?
I, I do, he actually is my, he's in my office, we work together constantly, um.
Okay. Was he working on that, uh?
Not that I'm aware of. The only thing is, was, was letting, uh, the board of selectmen know that there's timeline, that this is absolutely,
Right, right.
has to be done, and also, but as far as the financing of it, it was coming out of the land use budget.
Right, yeah.
The kind of economic develop, it's a strange divide. We work together, so, um.
Hmm.
Hmm.
I know he spearheaded it last time, and absolutely.
Well, that's like, that's what I'm saying, I know he, you know, he, he took, he took the reins last time, and he, he kind of just like, I don't follow, he's re- he's getting off the whole plan.
I, I don't know how. I don't know.
That was, uh, that was your experience?
I don't know how active he is, I know he's, he will be involved in it, but as far as his level of, of being able to submit to this project,
Right.
he's also been working on the streetscape project, he's also trying to work on various other things and, and kind of figure out T O C D, so I don't wanna speak for him, that's all I'm saying.
I know, that's what I mean.
And, and, you know, it is, it is something ultimately that we're responsible for, is planning, that's, that's probably the number one thing that we're responsible for, you know?
I, I can ask.
is, is putting this thing together, you know, and, and in the end, no matter how you get there, it's something that the, the planning commission owns, and, you know, and, and we're part of the P, we have to approve anything that goes forward. So, and in addition to many other approvals, yes.
Oh, no, no, it wasn't that. I was just gonna say, the other thing that I wanted to just bring up is, Westco itself suggested including
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
your affordable housing plan as part of your P O C D going forward, and that's, that's a big, big chunk and a big ask
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
in and of itself, in addition to the P O C D, which is, could be, depending on the, the, the scope of the work, that you're interested in undertaking.
Mm-hmm.
So just kind of throwing it out there on whether or not that's, that's a piece you do want included, or if this is a piece that, the, because the affordable housing plan has to be updated, I believe, every five years.
Hmm.
So, it, it's gonna have to.
And it was pretty recent, or?
It is pretty recent, it is pretty, you do have that going for us, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We went, yeah. Yeah, I think that's, we're pretty much filled out with all the affordable housing, I mean, the, the buildings that are on tap to be built, that haven't been built yet, so we're kind of like.
So currently, we have an affordable housing moratorium, but.
Right, because we were, we got our percentage.
Because you grew your percentage, but your percentage is not at the point in which it will be this way in perpetuity.
But we're never, it's never be, because the formula of affordable housing.
It's like six percent or something. Ten percent is a huge amount for a town like Brookfield.
The way. But the way it's, the way the formula is, the town will never get to that. Danbury did, but that's a hundred thousand people there.
It, it, it's just a.
And other places like that, but, you know, it's kind of like, it's like the formula is, is kind of far-fetched, and you can never really, you know what I mean, like the way it is.
But. So what it, what it's up to, I absolutely do, I, but when you don't reach your percentage and you don't have a moratorium, what it subjects you is to be, being susceptible to eight thirty G applications for affordable housing.
Right.
That's your, I don't wanna call it a penalty, because it's not, but that's what the state has determined, is, so,
Right. Right.
once that moratorium expires, or if we can't renew it, and, and I'll have to check on the dates on that, then eight thirty G, you know,
It's coming up.
but that's not saying you can't work on what you have a vision for as the planning commission, because affordable housing is also one of the, your hats, right?
So in our tra- I'm sorry, so in our training, um, modules, they actually talked about that, how you can create affordable housing without
New modules, yeah.
Right.
having new constr- building new construction, so, um, I guess the town of Saldington is using that strategy, so they can still meet the whatever state requirements are, plus, you know, um.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just like, it, it's a very difficult formula when you look at it, because it seems like you'll never get there, I think. You'd have to build a hundred thousand buildings, oh, we're there now, but.
Well, no, but the model that they're using for, to meet their quota, it does not include new construction. Basically, what they're doing is, um, they're using, um, you know, exi- ex- existing residential properties,
Reviving old buildings.
Subsidiary, yeah.
Hmm.
you know, to, you know, to declare one of the units affordable, um, and then
Right.
that's basically like what the video was saying, like the presenter was saying.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they follow a certain strategy to meet that requirement, and you know, some people think about.
Yeah, and then, it's thirty percent have to be affordable, right? So if you got a hundred apartments, seventy of them are market rate, and thirty are affordable, so how many buildings you have to build before that formula couldn't, it, it's a difficult formula, I don't, I don't see how the math works, huh?
Well.
You know what I mean, you have to keep.
And it's also a moving target, for, for every time you have a house that's built, it's a moving target.
Yeah, it is, it's difficult.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But I thought we were pretty close to that, because we have another four, I think four other buildings that have been built, something like that.
I think you're at five, three, five percent, if, if, off the top of my head, and that, so
Yeah.
there, there's a different percentage to allow you to qualify for a moratorium than there is to allow you to be exempt from eight thirty G, so there's two different timelines, there's two different formulas that we're looking at. Right now, you, you are currently under a moratorium, we do have a zoning provision for accessory dwelling units that does have an affordable provision to it, and so, since you're out of that strategy.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We have some of them, yeah.
Oh, good, I was wondering, yeah.
So, right, that's, some of the smaller towns are using that.
We've had some of the, some of the, I mean, some of the private houses or small houses are also affordable housing, right?
Absolutely.
And we've been working on that for a long time.
Go ahead.
Just wondering if you could, um, say a tiny bit more about that, um, the accessory dwelling unit, uh, is, you say is it ordinance, or it's?
So it's actually within the zoning regulations, I can actually print out and send you a copy of the zoning regulations that it addresses, but it does allow for either a senior, um,
Okay. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I can't remember the exact age, a senior caregiver to live in the accessory apartment, or you could offer it as an affordable.
Right.
So do you either have the restrictions, yes, or do you have that, that for, I believe, twenty-five years, but the deed restriction.
For, for rental units, okay, gotcha. And it, and now is this like a special use permit, so I was, I was seeing in the minutes that, that like, people coming out against these accessory dwelling units every time.
Yes. It's a special exception. Exactly. So, yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so maybe it's one or not, so.
Yes.
Is there, um, still a deed restriction component to eight dash thirty G? Because I remember there was still talk about how to get to those numbers in communities like ours, to maybe say that, you know, certain apartments would qualify, because you still have to have that deed restriction piece of it, and, and how they qualify income-wise, whether it's a state or regional.
But renters can qualify, so you can have it as long as the rental is being offered under that bracket of either the eighty percent or sixty percent, and you meet your, your qualifications that way.
And can you do that in a private dwelling?
Absolutely, that's what we've been doing with the, um, with the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, the old in-law house, the apartments, it's in all the.
Right, and who's monitoring that? How does that get monitored in town?
Uh, through the zoning department.
Got it.
So they actually have to annually register that either it's going to, that it meets the qualifications of their special permit, so.
So there's numbers somewhere.
Got you. We have about eighty-six of them currently.
Wow.
Eighty, eighty-six.
Let's go to them.
Um, any other thoughts or discussion on this? This is good. Uh, otherwise, uh, we move on, and we'll be in two weeks, I guess, we'll. But we'll move on to the next piece of the agenda, anyway, for now, um. So, where are we at? We are at the, oh, the status of the training. So. Uh, everybody, is everybody good?
No, I, I, I still haven't, I haven't opened the books, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I make one comment on this, to this from Mr. Chair?
Please.
They have to be done as by, um, they actually should have already been done, to be perfectly honest, if you've been on the commission, but as the chair, actually, I was gonna have to you about this tonight.
Sure.
As the chair, you're gonna have to certify or give the status update as far as where everyone is on their training
Oh. Ah, okay.
to the board of selectmen, and it can be, I, I asked the town attorney, this could be a some.
Got it. What, what's the format of that?
It could just be a memo that you select, submit under correspondence, I'd be, we could attach the spreadsheet, which might be easier, the very colorful sheet.
Okay. We'd have the screen. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah.
So it gives everybody an, an update, or you can format it any which way you'd like, but a memo form would be, be something that the board of selectmen said would be a great way to transmit it.
Is, is this up to, this is up to date as?
That is up to date as of today.
Okay. I can just have a little sign it.
This is like four fifteen, yeah, exactly.
It's actually, I'm really excited.
Oh, I'll sign it, okay, sorry.
It's like, right, I don't know, I did it all.
Well, I know, I'm good, actually, I took all of them a long time ago.
So was this due by their meeting on Monday?
Yeah.
So it's not due by their meeting on Monday, we, we are required by statute to notify the board of selectmen no later than March first.
Huh, okay, March first.
So, you have a little bit more time, the training was supposed to be completed by December thirty-first of last year, so.
Okay, so.
But there's no penalty that we're aware of.
Okay, all right. Um, when you think.
We gotta get on to this, we're.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we make this a little more green, then I can edit this out.
I don't think you have much left.
Yeah.
I think I've done two, three hours altogether, so, you have been four hours, or?
Mm-hmm.
Four hours, huh?
Four hours, five hours.
All right, I, I will follow up on that.
Yeah, I'll get on to this, yeah.
Okay, actually, when I see you in two weeks, I'll, I'll.
I can board it, it's green.
All right, um, okay, eh, on to, uh, correspondent, or minutes from other commissions. All right, um, okay, eh, on to correspondent or minutes from other commissions. So, um, I think we can run through this quickly, if you haven't already, and if there's anything that may be relevant to what we are doing, the Board of Interest particularly. The only thing I'll mention, I think, was in the zoning, uh, looks like they did, um, they amended some of the zoning regulations regarding the town, center, district, something that came before us beforehand. And they did go forward. Still haven't done anything in cannabis, so, yeah, just like dragging my feet there. I did not see anything else that is more, is directly related to us. Anybody like to bring up anything related to any of these minutes?
I was looking at this, uh, the director, uh, the library director, Caroline Ford, right? She, uh, they got a ten thousand dollar grant for the library, but she's gonna utilize it by promoting a, an author, Brendan Slocum, to do a couple of speeches. And I was kind of thinking like, is that good use of ten thousand dollars for the library, which they're always asking for, you know, grants, doing everything like that? And promoting a, a book that was, uh, uh, this author called Brendan Slocum, and I read a New York Times review on it. The review of the book, the book is called Symphony of Secrets that he's promoting, that they're gonna do, uh, he's gonna do a speech at the library and then at the high school. On February fifteenth at the library, February fifteenth at Brookfield High.
Is this just of general interest, or is this pertaining to planning?
Uh, it's just general interest, okay, it's, and I just thought it was kind of uh, weird that you're, uh, not weird, but is that appropriate use of ten thousand dollar grant for the, for the library to promote an author? Are they paying the author to do that?
Probably, yeah, I mean, that would be my guess, but I guess like.
And and the book that I, I looked up, the book is called Symphony of Secrets, New York Times reviewed it, said, "The novel's examination of white supremacy as an extracted force is clean and present." I was like, that's. A fiction book about white supremacy? And that's what the libraries uh, promote? I don't know, I just thought it was kind of all the ten thousand dollar grant to do that. Plus, that's just my opinion.
Does anybody else have anything of interest they would like to bring up? Or is there anything that may pertain to our business?
I got something about the pickleball courts.
Okay.
Pickleball, I mean, about the STEEP grant, so I was looking that the STEEP grant, I think, was already like, kind of going to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and they're depending on the STEEP grant from the pickleball courts for five hundred thousand dollar grant. But I think the uh, Water Pollution Control Authority, they might have got a commitment letter and they're like shovel-ready project already, ready to go. So, the Board of Selectmen was asking, you know, depending on that STEEP grant for the pickleball courts.
Well, that came, that came before us quite a while back, uh, they want.
Yeah, we were talking about that, yeah. And I was just looking at some, I I looked up one of the construction companies that does it, and the highest estimate they had was, the top of the line was fifty thousand dollars for one court. So they're proposing to do four courts at a price of two hundred and fifty thousand. So I just thought, you know, I'm.
Is that something you you gonna mention to, was it Park and Rec or wherever?
I was, uh, well, I guess it's the Board of Selectmen who's trying to get that STEEP grant, but how many people are, how many county agencies are competing for that STEEP grant? I mean, they kind of think that they're gonna get it, but I think it was like, you know, like I said, the Water Pollution Control Authority, I think, had it, you know, had already applied for it. And then there was one other thing, the newsletter, the planning and zoning newsletter that I see, that we got. I don't know if we could do this, you know, post-hoc, you know, uh, for John Van Heiss.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
About the lifetime achievement award.
Oh, thanks for bringing that up, yeah, I think.
I don't know if we can nominate somebody that, you know, post-hoc, post-hoc, you see.
That's a good thought, yeah. Uh, there was a follow-up, yeah, I think what we were hoping to get, and you were not at that last meeting, but, but the, the, uh, it was suggested that we do something for for John, uh, the tree.
Yeah, something, a memorial tree or something in the town hall.
And we weren't, we weren't sure of that process to do so, so.
Too bad we couldn't get him another horse out there. He really liked horses.
Yeah, he did, he did.
I'd want another little horse out there, a little baby.
It would have to have a Boston Red Sox cap on it.
A horse with a Red Sox cap.
Is there any ideas that you have in mind that you wanna pursue with it, or just give?
Well, I I just, I just put it out last, I'm just maybe like a memorial tree that would be somewhere at the town hall or something, it would apply. But then I just seen this on the newsletter, the planning and zoning newsletter, that uh.
For the lifetime member.
Uh, you could, you know, nominate somebody for a lifetime achievement award or length of service award, but I don't know if you can do it.
I'm not a hundred percent sure for that, I I, I won't make you try to say that word, I have trouble with it myself, so I'm not saying it either.
Even though I look at the breakdown, I never say it right.
But I will, I will certainly look into that, and then I, I know you were speaking about wanting more information on the STEEP grant and the pickleball courts earlier, uh, was there something that you were looking for in particular, or just wanted a broad overview?
So, uh, yeah, I believe that.
I'm sorry, I missed this one too.
That, that was at the, at the last meeting, in the minutes that I, when we, reviewing the minutes that came up, um, we had uh, tabled that, and then, but we did receive the information, a follow-up on that. But it, but it was already voted on, so that, it was, there was no more action for us to take upon, so, yeah.
That's what I was concerned about the STEEP grant, because I thought, I was at the W P C A, I thought they had already.
They're separate.
But there's only one STEEP grant.
They're separate. There's only one, but they're not. Yes, you could, you can actually do multiple, so.
Oh, I thought it was just the one, that's why I was confused.
I know, that's, yeah, it's confusing the way it's written.
Okay.
So, W P K is still good.
I think we're, uh, we can move on to informal discussion, does anybody have one?
Well, that was it.
A little bit of informal discussion.
We have to informal discussion, that's why I'm, sorry.
And and any other informal discussion? I'll, I'll mention one thing on my mind, it's just, uh, it came, it came up, we were talking about the the plan of conservation development, is um, is data, and I'm always like, for my job, I refer to data a lot, I'm sure a lot of people do, right? And and that's always been in the back of my mind, is what data is readily available? Not that we have to go out and create something new, but I'm sure there's a lot out there that if we looked at it, it might help give us some context to certain things that we, you know, that come across, come our way and so forth. Um, and that's something that's been in the back of my mind, like, here's the listing, if, instead of just reading minutes, right? Here's where we are, here's the breakdown where we are, I mean, with certain elements, you know, housing or land use, or, you know, things that pertain to us, right? And might be good to look at it on a regular basis, and again, what's readily available, not creating something, I don't wanna do that.
You sound a little fear on my.
Yes, 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 because I know there's other uses for these things, right, yeah, so. It's something that we don't have to answer today, but that's, that's something I have an interest in, of course, some of, we brought up maps, I, I, I look at maps all day. So that's part of my job, you know.
Can you make them?
No, I, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how to move things around, so, the world, so.
Because, because also knowing everyone's, you know, that's, that's huge to know that we have an asset who can actually make the maps, because I can't, I'm the first one to admit it, I create them, I can.
Does the town have Arc G I S, like a license that one could?
Let me look into to to that a little bit closer, but we do have a definitely, uh, because I don't know how many licenses are given out, so I have to touch base with you.
That's fine, I I'm working on getting mine through Pratt right now, but it's been, I've been having some issues, so as a backup, even if I came and like sat in a comput-, at a computer in town hall and churned them out, I could do that. And if, like, your, if folks are interested in building their skillset and some of those like graphic or the data, and you know, the data visualization, whatever, um, that's something that we, you know, we could do together, we could sit down and think about, you know, how, because, yeah, it's, um, it's, I I feel like data is so powerful, but it's not rocket science, a lot of this stuff is like pretty intuitive and like easy, and a lot of it is probably available, so once you know where to look, then we can think about how to tell an interesting story, you know, about this place, and. I I did get that sense reviewing this um, existing plan, that there were definitely some areas where, just knowing what I know about like, what's available, that I felt like we could have, there could be more nuance in the discussion that could actually probably give us like, a little bit more of a, of a foundation to talk specifically, you know, and like strategically about some of the, the ideas here, so. I I'm a data nerd, so, you and me, together than anyone else who wants to, um, yeah.
Yeah, and and even the layout too, I find the, the current plan, trying to find a certain thing, a certain place, is not, yeah. There's, there's always ways to improve.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, any other informal thoughts? It's a tradition, you're on.
Motion to adjourn.
Anyone want to second that? I'll second it, sure we all do, yes, all right. All eyes, yeah, thank you very much, everybody.